Of the Kenmore Planning Commission, the first item on the agenda is citizen comment. Any citizen wishing to render comment, please step forward to the podium on your right or left, state your name, your address, and limit your comments to three minutes. We usually get a sign-in sheet, so I'll let Bridget bring it on back here. First name on the sign-in sheet is Sharon Hawkins.
My name is Sharon Hawkins and I live at Inglewood East Shores, 7301 Northeast 175th Street, number 308, Kenmore, Washington. I've been coming to you a lot of these meetings regarding the preservation of the mobile home parks. I realize we live in a state where we do not have rent control, but there has to be some kind of an RCW or a law that protects senior citizens and elderly in general when it comes to the amount of rent when the community is deemed a 55 and older community. I'm only talking about senior citizen communities. Places like SHAG and other senior citizen apartment condos, communities, regulate their rents knowing the occupants are on fixed incomes, which prevent the residents from being pushed out due to the rent. If the owners are allowed to get write-offs with HU D when a resident is 55 and older, then that tells you there should be something out there that protects 55 and older communities. The only other thing I would like to ask is, what is your definition of the word affordable? This has been asked over and over, and I can't seem to get an answer of what your definition of the word affordable is. If we can't get a definition of the word affordable, it should be removed from all contexts. For having rent that takes 80 percent of a person's fixed income is not in any way, shape, or form affordable. Our community doesn't allow roommates, so if you are single, the rent is definitely a burden and is not in the definition of affordable. I know you can't control the rent, but there has to be an overlooked initiative or law that can assist in maintaining the rate of a senior citizen park rent so that it doesn't get so high that they can't afford it. Thank you for everything you have been doing for us. I truly appreciate it for all your time and efforts.
Thank you, Sharon. Next name on the list is Robert Spurlock.
My name is Robert Spurlock. I live at 7021 Northeast 181st, Unit Number 3. We've been there over 31 years, named a wife, and 31 years ago, one of the first owners in there was a senior citizens park. And the reason why I got in there, I was, got hurt on the job. I was disabled and unable to work. So, so out of the goodness of the heart of Jim Plurk, he let us move in there. I'm here tonight to urge you to look at everyone who's involved in this upgrade of the city you're going through. I don't want to hold back any progress, because I believe in progress and change for the better. And in the meantime, you have some of these people who are going to be displaced, and I'm here to talk not only for myself, but for them. And I would like to see some sort of a method put into place to take care of some of the people who will actually lose their mobile home and lose their investment that they put into their home to buy and own and maintain. And if that's on your list somewhere to take care of those type of people, I'm imploring you to use such a procedure. I've been really happy here in Kenmore. I think it's a good place. When they incorporated it some years ago, I thought it was a very good idea. And the idea of closing up the main street of Kenmore, I think it's a very good idea. But all I should want to do is take care of those people who are so affected by the upgrade in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. And if I mispronounce somebody's name, please correct me. Next name on the list is Harry Perfater.
Excuse me. I was here last time and last meeting you folks had, and I had given a paper submission, and apparently you did not get that at that time. I wasn't aware of that. I gave it to the commission, I think, on the 15th, or to the city clerk on the 15th, and it was the meeting, I presented myself on the 16th, and you didn't have it. And I asked when I was here if you had any questions about that. A lot of that information that I put, if you've read it, is not really directly related to this zoning issue. But it is, and I recognize that. I'd be a fool not to. But why I've put it in is not exactly, not related to the issue, because there are a lot of stories in those mobile home parks about people who came to live, and they had no place to go. I might be one of them. And the fact is, you really should consider that, these long-term residents who've been here, and not just for me, as the gentleman had just stated, but for the others. There are a lot of senior citizens here, and it's unfortunate, we all don't have, there's great wealth in this society, but not everyone shares in it. I want to thank you for taking the time to listen. If you have any questions about my submission, be glad to answer them. Otherwise, I finished quite early this time. Thank you.
Thanks, Harry. Next name on the list is Stacy Valenzuela.
Hi, I'm Stacy Valenzuela from Lakewood Villa. First, I'd like to thank you guys for all the time you've put into these decisions and looking at things, as well as everybody else, and appreciate everything. One of the first things is that Kenmore has reached the capacity of units for density. And also, we have Lake Point that is still being worked on, that will add additional density. St. Edward's is being converted to the Lodge, which will help with the motel issue in the area. All good things. What the city needs to provide now is more affordable housing, not the luxury-marked bonus units that we already have. There's a lot of workers in the area and a lot of seniors and vets that have nowhere to go. The mobile home parks, all six of them, are in the 30 or less, maybe 40 percent of fixed income, affordable housing. So they're based on that income. Whereas most of the affordable housing that is being built in the one of every four is in the 50 to 80 percent of the King County medium income, which is a lot higher and way higher than any of the incomes that the low or fixed income residents can afford. I think it's very easy in the end that if the city of Kenmore started the moratorium and started this all off was to protect and preserve the affordable housing of the mobile home parks in Kenmore, then the city should be, it should be very easy to just designate them with overlays or the protection and protect and preserve the mobile home parks. I think we can look to empty lots, older or underused buildings, and ask developers and businesses and anybody else that can help in the community to help build more affordable housing rather than displace our residents that are already in the mobile home parks. And I hope you'll take this into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. The next and last name on the list is John Crumrighty, Crumrighty, if I got it right. Hey, John.
I live at Inglewood East and I'd like to thank you guys, too, for all the time you've taken on this issue. And some things have improved at our park since the attention has been brought to the city, more awareness of our situation where low-income and fixed-income folks that are vulnerable seem to be taken advantage of. But on the last rents, I think our pet rents were taken away, and there were no Kenmore franchise fees on this bill, which had been appearing on every bill. And our boat access to our boat ramp has been opened up for the first time for about six months. We've got access to the river again, for some reason. I can only imagine it's because of the attention brought by these hearings. And people are still getting $140 late fees on rent that they swear they mailed on time, but the landlord says that they got it late, and so they're still charged 140. There's still been some more of those issued. Some people have gotten fees on cars that the landlord claims weren't registered to that unit, and so they're added $30 or $40 a month rent for a visitor's car. But I think the bottom line is that we pay three-quarters of a million dollars a year in rent now at our park. And that used to be about $400,000 to $450,000, just six years ago. And that's intolerable and unsustainable for the, a lot of the people that live there just can't, can't have their rents double again. A lot of them, when they moved in, were told rents wouldn't go up more than $20 to $30 a year, "Don't worry about it," but that their rents still go up $100 a month each year. And it's causing a lot of stress on people that can least handle it, low-income seniors in our situation. So I think some has been done, but we need more protections written into these laws where the people that live in our park put all their money into their house and then are subject to whatever rent the landlord decides the rent should be. It could be double. We have no control. It's a real vulnerable situation. But I do appreciate all the time that you've taken on this issue, and I hope we get some good results. And thank you, guys.
Thanks, John. So that completes the number of people who signed up at the beginning of the meeting to speak tonight, but I invite anybody else who wants to step up and render comment to do so if you'd like. Go ahead, ma'am.
My name is Arlene Mackley Bear, and I reside at Inglewood East Mobile Park. Sorry that I got here late. I just left Evergreen Hospital for some further treatment for cancer. This is my second time around. I have lived at Inglewood East for 20 years. I am thankful that I have a roof over my head. We have a lot of people who don't have that, so I am truly blessed. I do ask for your sincere evaluation and your sincere cooperation and understanding and compassion in this matter with the zoning. Many of us seniors are paying more than half of our income that we get. A lot of, many of us are on disability, and it's going to rent. I haven't been in a restaurant in over 15 years, haven't had a cup of coffee in a restaurant, can't afford it, can't afford a goldfish, and I'm not kidding. In my bank account, I had $4.78 last month, and I still had bills to pay. It's scary. And I believe that, yes, it takes a village to raise a child. Well, it takes a city to support a senior. Many of these people have served our country, and many of them still do in many ways by supporting their other neighbors and trying to do the best that they can to keep our community in good standing and a friendly place to be. And I think that's what we really all strive to at the end of the day, is be able to lay our head down peacefully. I can truly say that's not happening in Number 203 at Inglewood East. I can't sleep at night. I am scared to death because the lease is due next month. I pray that we will not be zoned out. I pray that with every fiber of my meaning. And it takes a lot, but I'm going to continue praying, because trying to fight this cancer for the second time and then having to worry about a roof over my head, and how am I going to be priced out of everything that I had I put in in order to buy that mobile? Everything I had. I don't have a savings account. It just, it isn't there. So please, be compassionate and think of it as if it was one of your own family members. How would you feel if they were in that position and they had those worries, day after day after day? I thank you for all your hard work, everything that you've put into this. I know it's not easy. I'm not in your shoes, but I can see in your eyes that each one of you has really put a lot of thought into this. I thank you for your compassion. I pray that the Lord blesses you and your families, and may an angel always be by your side. I thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Arlene. Does anybody else want to step up tonight? Going once? Okay. That closes the citizen comment portion of the agenda tonight. Thank you, everybody, for your comments. I'm going to have a couple of questions for the staff after we, when they step up to the presentation table that will address some of the comments that were made tonight. But before that, on the agenda is approval of minutes. The first set of minutes would be that for April 17, 2018, Planning Commission meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve or amend?
Go ahead. Two questions.
Yes, sir.
The first one is, I wasn't sure if I'm getting all the names correctly.
Oh.
Mine.
Okay.
In the paragraph three, they use an E instead of an O.
Okay.
Like, try to describe the paragraph four, second page. Fourth paragraph down, it says, "The majority of the planning commission agreed that this was not well-suited." And I wasn't sure what this meant.
Okay. I guess we'd have to, unless somebody wants to volunteer that, that's on the commission, we could ask staff what they meant. This refers to three, option 3B?
Right.
Okay. So do you want to change the word "that" to option 3B?
Agreed that the word "that" is issued, that option 3B was not well-suited.
Okay.
Just add the specific.
So I'll take that as a motion to amend. Do I hear a second for that motion to amend? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. So we'll set these aside for now. Which leaves approval of the May 15 and May 16 Planning Commission meeting minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve or amend? Do I hear a second?
I second it.
Okay, I assume that's to approve, right? Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Aye, all. Actually, I can't vote, because I wasn't here for that meeting. So we have six ayes, I think. Do we, anybody who objects, raise your hand and say nay. Any abstentions, motion carries? I'm sorry, is there a nay? Abstention, and another abstention, two abstentions. So the motion to approve the May 15 and 16 minutes is approved, passes, and carries. Next item on the agenda, Housing Strategy Plan, preserving existing affordable housing. I invite the city staff to the presentation table.
Chair Nugent?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you mind if everybody make sure that their mics are on and speaking into the mics so the rest of the everybody can hear?
Yeah. Okay.
Good evening. So this evening is the night that we are hoping that the Planning Commission will make their final recommendations on the mobile home park options for the six mobile home parks. Tentatively, July 9th has been identified as an evening that would work with the City Council for a joint meeting. The mobile home park discussion would be the primary item on the agenda, and so when, at the appropriate time, we can take a poll and make, I've heard from several of you, but not from all of you, see if we have a quorum for that evening. Anyway, on May 15th and 16th, you held the public hearing and heard from a number of folks, and we tried to summarize those comments. The different colors of shading reflect whether they're related to a single park. You had asked that we try to provide the materials by park, and so we have done that. And so, again, the purpose of this evening is for you to discuss what you heard at the public hearing, to revisit the recommendations you have made so far, to determine whether you wish to revisit any of those recommendations. And then staff had a couple of specific suggestions. One is that it would be helpful if the commission could identify which criteria specifically were used when the recommendations were made. I think the city council would find that useful. And then the second piece of that was that for some of the parks, multiple recommendations were made, which is fine if the recommendations can work together, but in some cases, they don't work together. So we just need to clarify, you know, what is the primary recommendation, and then what are the other options that you are considering?
Thank you.
So, there you go. No, that's fine.
I'm sorry. Didn't mean to step on the end of that. You know, one thing I did want to do, and I forgot before you started, was to raise a couple of questions that were raised in the citizen comments, so that people had a sense of our response to that.
Sure.
I know that, I think it was Sharon had asked if there is a law that limits rent increases on low-income people or seniors.
As far as staff knows, there is not. There are rent notification increases and, or provisions for notifications if there are going to be rent increases. And so staff actually is preparing a memo for the city council that's supposed to go to the council in July to talk about that issue. But the issue of rent control, as we discussed at the public hearing, the state does not permit rent control.
Yeah, but she mentioned that, but there's no alternative either.
Right. Not that I'm aware of, except just this provision for potentially a longer notification period if the rents are to be increased.
Right. Another question was, what does affordable mean? We have gotten that question before, and we've tried to answer it, but obviously not everybody understands, so.
Yeah. So we have, in the city, typically considered affordable to be up to 80 percent of average median income. There is a low.
For King County.
King County, right.
Right.
There is a low income, there are several thresholds, but the maximum affordable is 80 percent. And different projects, in terms of city regulations, have different requirements. Some at 30 percent, 35 percent, some actually as much as 85 percent. So, anyway, it depends on the circumstance what the definition is.
Right. There are different thresholds based on King County median income.
Correct. That is correct.
So, the part of the challenge we have is, affordable doesn't mean everybody could afford it based on their income. It's based on King County median income, and there are different thresholds. And the more affordable the requirements are, that is, the lower the rent would have to be to satisfy, for example, the lowest rung of that affordability scale, which is 30 percent of King County median income, the harder it is to get a private investor/developer/owner to build it. So we could pass laws all over the city saying you have to build rental property that could be afforded by people making 30 percent of King County median income or more. It's very unlikely somebody would do it. So we could do it, but it wouldn't produce anything. We've got various parts of the city where there are incentives for builders to provide affordable housing, and they're not doing it. So there has to be, there has to be a profit in it typically for an investor to take the risk and put the money up and all that. So that's part of the balance we're trying to strike, is how to provide incentives for new construction or new housing or more units. And the reason for that is, the more units out there, the lower the rents go. The competition is what gets landlords to reduce the rents. They have to keep up with the guy down the street or the woman down the street who's offering a unit for less. And some of that is going on. I don't know if you guys are reading the Seattle Times, you know, month to month, they'll have a survey on rents and housing costs, and more housing units are going up. And I know a lot of them are really expensive, and they're high rises and all that stuff. But people move into those, and they leave behind less expensive units. We've seen research on that, too. So the overall supply increases, and the rents tend to come down, and that's actually happened in about the last six months. I'm not saying they've come down enough. I'm not saying everybody can afford them. But there really is a relationship between supply and demand and price. And that's what we're trying to do, too, is strike a balance that creates more housing so those prices, not just for you, but for everybody, tend to come down or go up more slowly. People have more choices. And again, if we put too many controls on this, nobody builds anything and the supply stays stagnant, and more people move to the area and bid up the prices. So it actually is counter-effective sometimes to do that. Those are some of the many things we've tried over the last six to eight months with this issue to balance. Nobody, as I've said before, is going to get everything they want. The owners aren't going to get everything they want. The residents aren't going to get everything they want. We're trying to strike a balance that gives owners a reason to stay invested in these properties, not sell them out the minute they can, first minute they can. We are actually proposing, as of now, we may not, I don't know what the final goal will be, to keep some of the incentives for the existing mobile home parks, a few of them, to stay as they are, strong incentives. So that's something that would help the residents. So there's balancing going on here, and I agree with people who've said, you know, this doesn't do enough, or nothing's going to be enough, and still balance those competing interests, because if we give everything to one side, nothing's going to happen. Nobody's going to build, supply stays the same, prices go up. If we give everything to owners, obviously, people get displaced in even more than they would be otherwise. So I just want you to know, there's multiple sides to this. We're getting criticized somewhat from residents, of course, we've heard some of that. We're getting criticized from the owners, too. And that's because we're trying to compromise, and not everybody's getting, neither side's getting everything they want. There were a couple other questions, I think, no, I think that's it, that I made a note of to ask tonight. So, getting back to Lori was talking about, tonight, we have our proposals. Tonight's the night to decide whether to finalize those ideas or to modify those ideas. And then Lori had suggested a couple of ways to help the city council understand our reasoning behind that. So I open the floor to discussion on whether we, Lori, do you think we should take this one proposal at a time or take up the points that you and staff raised in your memo?
I think if you want to structure it, you could take it either up by option or you could take it up by park, whichever seems easiest. You have, again, the public comment by park. You also have the chart that shows the options, and I can put that up on the screen if that would be helpful, to see the current recommendations.
Yeah, let's do that. And why don't we go with park by park, which is what we've done in the past, unless somebody objects? Does that sound okay? And we'll try and, with each park before we finish, address the staff's recommendation, linking our criteria for deciding on an option with the specific facts that apply to the park. How big it is, whether it's close to full density, how well-developed it is, whether there are environmental constraints to redevelopment. Those are some of the factors that we looked at in making our decision or the ones we've made to this point. So the first, go ahead, Lori.
I was just going to mention that those criteria, if you want to look at those at the same time, we're in Attachment 5 to your packet.
Thanks. Right. All right, so, first park on the criteria list, if you want to do it that way, would be 7031 Northeast 175th Street, Lakewood Villa. would be 7031 Northeast 175th Street, Lakewood Villa. I think our first order is to decide if we want to stick with that proposal or amend the proposal or use them, and the options that apply to that park. Let me point out that option one, option two, and option three A were previously voted on as being applicable and suitable for that park. Does anybody want to comment on that or make a proposal? Propose any changes to that? None? Okay. So let's then look at the criteria for having chosen options one, two, and three A for Lakewood Villa, and identify, a majority of us, identify which of these criteria justifies choosing options one, two, and three A and not choosing options three B and four. Anybody want to open with justifications?
Vice Chair? I'll give it a shot here. Well, I looked at this, and again, just speaking, at least for myself, this is already, they're already up to 88% of their allowable density. So that is one criteria that I found pretty compelling for this long-term preservation option. I also was really swayed by the redevelopment timeline, a long 10 to 15 years. So it would be less pressure in the near term to redevelop already. The size, it's a large park, and I think those were the main ones I was looking at for that one. Oh, the other one was that there's a lot of environmental issues with redevelopment. That was another key one that I found compelling, so.
Thank you. And so if we number each of these criteria, I've got eight on this chart, starting with size, and the last one is feasibility of selected option. Vice Chair, I think you identified number one, two, five, and seven.
And three.
Thanks. And you want to explain three?
Just the consistent, the current, if I understand the current zoning is consistent with the vision in the comprehensive plan, I believe that's what that refers to.
For this area of town.
Exactly, for this specific park, exactly, right.
How this property in this area would be used.
Yes, exactly.
Okay. Anybody want to add to that or challenge that? No? I saw Commissioner Malkeer's hand up first.
No challenges to those. I think those are all solid justifications. I would add to that differentiator for the age restriction protects seniors in this case, and we've all identified that's a highly vulnerable population.
Okay, Commissioner Vanderlin?
I was going to point out the same thing. I'd be concerned that if we allowed this to be redeveloped in another way, you would lose that intention of this being restricted to an older population, so.
Okay. Anybody else? Commissioner Baker, nothing? McDonald, no? You're good with those?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, let me elaborate a little bit, and Vice Chair, you can chip in here. But if you look at, if you look at criteria one and two, which is, refers to the size, the number of units in a park, and the percent of allowable density in a park. What I had said before was, the more units we have in this town, the less the rents are going to be. So if a park is already almost fully developed, and this is a very high percentage, 88% of the possible density is already there, that means they're making a lot of use. They're providing a lot of units per acre on that area. And that's a good reason to keep it. We're not losing much if we don't redevelop it. So, you know, when we're balancing things and we want to increase supply, we've already got a lot of supply in Lakewood Villa, and we want to keep a lot of supplies or increase supply wherever we can. So I think that's what you're referring to, right? So that strikes a balance. The residents get to stay, but the supply is already good, so we're not losing much by not redeveloping it. And it's consistent, as others have said, with what the city's already zoned the property for. It's near the slough, it's got a lot of environmental constraints, it would be hard to redevelop it. So, I think that's, I'm elaborating, but I think that, kind of, I'm trying to underscore what you're saying there. You want, anybody want to talk about why the other options are not suitable for Lakewood Villa? Options three B and option four? I mean, it's kind of the same thing. You've got environmental constraints. Options three B and four look for redevelopment of more units on an existing mobile home park. We've already got a lot of units there, as I just said, so you don't get that much benefit from redevelopment there. And it's near the slough, and there are bigger setbacks, near wetlands like that. You can't redevelop it in a lot of ways without environmental problems and threatening the environmental concerns there. Yeah, and redevelopment really, you know, really high density isn't quite what the city had in mind in its comprehensive plan for the properties near the slough. You don't see businesses down there, you don't see really tall buildings down there. So it's sort of suited for what the current use is. So that's why we're not looking at options three B and four for Lakewood Villa. Hopefully that explains it. Anybody want to correct me on anything there? Commissioner Vanderlin?
Not to correct, but just to make a statement about option three B.
Okay.
Generally, we've rejected that option for any of the options.
Yeah.
And I would, in my own view, the primary reason for that is, basically what it does is it puts a pause, which really doesn't benefit either the preservation in the long term, providing security to the residents, and it doesn't provide any incentive, it just puts on pause any possibility for redevelopment. So it really, quite frankly, appears to be a punt to me that really has no good effect for the community or the residents.
Okay? All right, go ahead, Lori.
Could I just respond to that a little bit?
Sure.
So that particular option, the, because the commission was not interested in talking about a longer notice period, that was something that we talked about a little bit and may come back. This was, in fact, a way to offer basically a longer notice period to those who were concerned about their future, at the same time, offering something to a developer to make it worth their while to wait.
Right.
So I don't think that, I understand that it's a pause, but it was a pause with a purpose.
Commissioner, you want to respond to that, or?
No, other than to say, I understand that, I just don't think it's an effective response.
Okay.
I agree with, I agree with Mike there. And I think the longer notice closure is included in at least one or two of our options, correct, Lori?
Right, maybe for a year or two, but not, maybe this is like a 10-year.
Potential extensive notice closure is part of our recommendations, yeah.
So we've addressed, and hopefully, Lori, you've got what you need.
Got it.
To explain to the council why we made those choices based on our criteria. So the next recommendation from staff is, we have more than one recommended option for Lakewood Villa. Multiple options may conflict. For example, guaranteed long-term preservation does not fit with the recommendation that incentives be provided to the property owner to preserve, to achieve preservation for several years. And go ahead, Lori, how does that conflict here?
Right, so what I was going to say on this, this is, in fact, a good test case. So the option one is long-term preservation through, again, the fee and lieu or TDR that we talked about. Option two is preservation through purchase, which is something that the city council or a nonprofit would consider. I view those two options as compatible, one or the other. The idea is long-term preservation through one of three means, basically. But option three A is not quite the same. What it says is that you're offering incentives to the property owner, and then if the property owner agrees that they want to use the incentive, then you take, this was an incentive-based model rather than a requirement. So I could see that maybe you wanted to offer incentives to the property owner to improve their, improve their mobile home park or something like that. But I don't think that that's where you would get to the preservation issue, unless you want it to be entirely voluntary. And so you would then have one, two options that are mandatory, and a third option that's voluntary. And I think those can collect.
Well, aren't all of these options at the discretion of the owner? I mean, one, for example, the owner, it's only until an owner would want to sell the park that they would be able to trade it for TDRs, right? Credits?
Well, potentially.
They would keep the park as is, and it's only, go ahead.
You would put an overlay zone over it and say you had to use TDR or fee and lieu if you wanted to.
Sell it.
Right, do something with it.
Nothing changes until they choose to sell it.
Well, you'd probably put an overlay over it before they sold it.
Okay. But that could happen, and then they keep it as is. And you could have an overlay for option two, and you can have an overlay for option three. It would just be up to the owner to decide which of those they want to follow, right? Select.
Well, I.
If they want to either preserve it or sell it.
I guess I'm confused. Because option one and option two, from my understanding, were required long-term preservation. The owner was not given the choice to preserve. The owner was asked to preserve and then compensated in some way, either through a fee and lieu or a transfer of development rights or through purchase of the property. It was not the owner's choice to preserve.
Then I was confused, so thanks for clearing that up. Anybody want to discuss this, how to resolve this conflict? Any ideas?
Well, if, for example, if you, I would not recommend that you move forward with three options, particularly if they don't jive. If you want to say, city council, we think these are our preferred options in order, or you want to say, we prefer these two options and not this third option, that is what I would recommend.
Okay.
And it comes down to mandatory versus voluntary preservation, is what it comes down to.
Anybody want to make a proposal here? It seems to me that ranking these in preference might be the best way to go.
Well, I would maybe start with a proposal.
Yeah.
Test this out, that we consider removing the applicability of option three A for the first two parks on our list.
Anybody respond? Mike?
I agree in principle, and in part, that's the same logic that I see in rejecting three B. I'm not sure this added flexibility adds anything, and I don't really think it's consistent with, if our, I think what we're being asked here, are we looking for long-term preservation in these two sites? Or are we looking for some other out? And I think we have to make a decision here. And having both options in here, having a partial, again, time-limited potential preservation, again, leaves the parks in a period of limbo, which I don't think, again, is services anyone.
Well, I thought three A, potential preservation of the MHP for several years through incentives. I thought that if the owner had this financial incentive to preserve, lower taxes, other benefits from the city, that they would then be required to continue the MHP use for a certain period of time, right?
That's correct.
So what about this? What if we had three A there that the owner could exercise that option for a limited period of time? So it'd be a zoning overlay that gives the owner a chance to collect those benefits for, I don't know, two years, three years, if they want to go that way. And if they don't, or if they sell before those two or three years, they have to use options one or two. So there's the guaranteed preservation, but the owner gets a chance to do the alternative. So there's something in it for them, there's some balance, I'm trying to balance again here. And at the end of the day, preservation is completed, our goal is satisfied with any of these three options. It just gives the owners a little more control. And, you know, maybe invest in the properties more. If it's going to be long-term and they get benefits, they've already said, we'll put money back into it if the city is willing to help out with the cost of running it. Any thoughts about that, Commissioner?
Yeah, I see your logic in that, and I don't disagree with it. But I keep coming back to the owner's representations that they have no intention of selling or making a transfer within a very long period of time or at all. So I'm not sure why providing them an incentive that would basically decrease their operating cost, why they need that incentive. It appears to me that they've already made the decision that they have a viable investment here, the way it stands.
Yeah, well, it's one thing to hear it, it's another thing to do it, well.
We can all go by what they said.
What's that?
We can only go by what they said.
Well, I don't.
Repeatedly, they thought this was a viable investment, and they were in for the long term. If they're lying to us, or if they're misleading us, then I don't know that we need to put in an option three A that would take them off the hook for that.
Well, or they could change their minds based on changed markets and things like that. It's not necessarily bad faith.
No, I understand the trade-off is, I just.
Yeah, yeah.
Thinking where we, again, where you, you're right, you need to have a balance here.
Yeah.
To the extent that we leave, I think, too.
So what's the upside of taking it off the table? That the city's not spending money on this?
Well, I wouldn't know if there would be, because we're, well, that's true. There would be, the city could be foregoing some charge.
Yeah.
But I think, does it also put the city in a situation where it becomes more intimately involved in the day-to-day operation of the park?
I wouldn't.
City then become the arbiter for, my rents are too high, utility costs are too high.
Well, they're giving a benefit to reduce utility costs, so I don't see how they play, make a, I don't see how they're in the middle, they just say, here's the deal.
And so, just patient with those, that benefit would not necessarily be passed on to the residents.
Well, maybe. We've got a lot of loose ends on a lot of these options. I mean, we could, that could be something the city council chooses to do. If you take this benefit, then you pass on some cost savings, we share it with the tenants.
I might just jump in here. I think, actually, what I'm hearing is a slightly different take on three A. I think what I'm hearing is long-term preservation of that park, not at the owner's discretion, but at the city's discretion. However, the mechanism to compensate the property owner could be a number of things. It could be TDR, it could be fee and lieu, it could be purchase, it could be a loan for infrastructure.
Right.
Whichever one of those.
Or reduced utilities. To the extent the city can influence that.
Whatever of those are most desired by the property owner. But the critical factor is that it is not discretionary. It is mandatory preservation, and somehow the property owner would be compensated, is that?
I'm fine with that. That actually wasn't quite what I was thinking. I was thinking, okay, they get a window of time to exercise this option, but they don't have the option to just sell it without preserving. So my point was, let's find a way to make three A an option here. Because I think there's some merit to it, and obviously, the owners have come into us and said, this is the way we'd like to go, we do want to keep it, but it's expensive. You know, we're giving up some opportunities, some economic opportunity and economic value. Can the city help us absorb the blow if we preserve the parks? So three A would do that. And so the way Lori phrased it, it's mandatory in every respect. It just means the owners have one more way of trying to recoup some of the economic burden of the preservation.
That helps me in terms of maintaining the mandatory preservation component of it. I think we want to be very clear that the council understands that what's happening here is we're, it seems to me, so we're offering a different type of incentive to the owners. Rather than a zoning or zoning change as an incentive, we're providing, we're having a somewhat nonspecific thought that the city might provide other types of incentives. And we have a list here, some of which are actually under the city's control, like the city could make a loan. Have to consider that. Or it could try and influence utilities to do something. But it's different from what we have in the earlier options, which are specifically related to zoning.
Yeah.
Right.
I think if we were explicit about that, the city can offer non-zoning-related incentives.
And what, as you said, what about adding? And what, as you said, what about adding the preference that cost savings be, to some extent, passed on to the residents?
I think that's a good thing. We have to have some expectations in there. What is the city expecting to get out of this? Mandatory preservation? One?
Because we can do mandatory preservation without incentives, right? With the strong arm. Right? But we could also invite them to pass that on. Comments? See a lot of thinking going on.
Yeah.
Mr. Baker?
I feel like... I understand why we created this option and kind of boiled it down to a voluntary compliance to preserve the park. But I'm not sure I really believe that that incentive would accomplish the long-term preservation, unless we go back to making it the first window. If a park owner wants to trigger these incentives to create a window of preservation for a period of time, then the other two options would kick in when that window closes. So it does kind of give the owner a period of time where there's help involved with running the cost of running the park. But it doesn't seem like they would have any incentive to pass that on to the people who actually live there. It preserves the park.
But zoning, if an ordinance required it, as part of getting the benefit from the city, they had to pass on, and the council could decide the extent to which they'd pass it on.
But that's not written in this option. It would just be...
This whole thing is kind of moving, amending what we first thought about, based on what the staff said about the conflict.
So I think if we did pass this recommendation up, we need to put those details in there.
Lori, does that... What Carol described was concern that this wouldn't, that what you had proposed wouldn't guarantee long-term preservation. But I think it would. But I'd like you to respond.
Yeah, I think I would not recommend... If your goal is long-term preservation, I would not recommend a voluntary window of period of time where they could say, "Okay, we'll take a loan and we'll guarantee to preserve," because they could make the opposite choice. They could say, "Okay, it's my two-year window, and I'm not going to take the incentive, and I'm going to redevelop my park," which is not the goal. It has to be.
No, no. That's... Yeah, although I wasn't thinking of that.
Yeah.
I was thinking, their only option would be TDRs or selling to the residents.
Right. So I guess what I'm saying is, it seems to me that all three would result in long-term preservation, as long as you made it clear.
Right.
That it's long-term preservation. It's not discretionary not to do long-term preservation.
You just get to choose which way you preserve it.
Go, right.
What kind of economic benefit you get.
Right.
From these options.
Right.
Okay, so it does work without a window. Works better without a window.
Yeah, I think it works better without a window. You just say, "Here's your little menu of choices that you can have about how you want to take your compensation for the fact that we are not going to let you redevelop this park."
Right. That address your concern?
That addresses my concern because it eliminates the vagueness of what we were talking about before. But we have to be able to state that.
Right. So, how about a motion? Noodling going on here?
I guess I have a question before we get to a motion phase. So if these aren't mutually exclusive options and a park owner opted for incentives under 3A, and then at some point stopped wanting the incentives under 3A, they would then be subject to either options one and two, which could include fee-in lieu payments. So essentially, they're... It seems like we're writing the script on that, right? That seems like the financial choice most would make. It's giving both sets of benefits. Taking the incentives did not reduce your future fees in lieu. But I think we're... And I don't see, knowing that options one or two would be the safety net or the fallback position if they chose not to take the incentives, I don't see where the city is necessarily motivated to be very creative in the incentive phase, knowing that they're still going to achieve their preservation requirements with either options one and two. So I don't quite understand how these are compatible. I understand one and two are not mutually exclusive, but three seems to be setting a course that they're going to take incentives for as long as they can, and then when they get tired of that, they're going to take fee-in lieu, and they'll still be made whole.
Lori, is that what you had in mind?
I assumed that they were sort of mutually exclusive. You chose one of the three options.
And you're locked into a period of preservation, just as you are with one or two. Commissioner Vanderlin?
Yeah, I'm concerned about that for similar reasons that I've stated before. I don't know that you can realistically lock three, lock anybody into 3A, because the conditions that you're trading off here, city's agreements to make loans, city's ability to be able to leverage whatever influence it has for utilities, all of these things are largely outside of the control of the city and could change year to year. So you're putting the city in a situation where it could be in conflict with the owners because the city can't deliver on the promises that it made earlier on or in year three, four, five, promises it made in year one. But I think if you're going to do this, it has to be maybe something like you have a one-time upfront option to do this. I still have concerns. I can't see a prudent landowner saying, "I'm going to trust the city's ability to continue to deliver into the future what it says today when it doesn't actually have control over what it's, what they're at least beginning offering." So again, 3A has real problems.
Too many problems for you. Do you want to respond to that, Lori?
Staff recommendation is that you choose one and two if you want long-term preservation. We do not recommend 3A, but it's your call.
Mike, yeah?
And I think when we were working through these options, this seemed like a way to, again, balance the hit that a property owner will obviously have if we have these long-term overlays that we put in place. And, you know, now that we've had time to think about it, we've listened to the public, the people that are going to be affected by it, as well as considering what the landowners' stated goals were, I don't see a reason why we need to keep that option in there.
3A.
3A.
I still like it, and I'll tell you why. First of all, landowners have no alternative but to do one or two if they don't do 3A. So we've got guaranteed preservation. The city gets something out of it because they, not just preservation, but if the landowners accept option 3A, we're recommending the ordinance require the landowners to pass on savings to the residents. So the residents get two benefits: preservation and lower costs, or rents. So I think the city would have an interest in that. And if the city couldn't deliver, the landlord would, or the owner, would then be discharged from option 3A, but their only alternative to preservation, well, there would be no alternative because they'd have to sell it under one or two. So I think the residents are protected in any respect and get this potential upside, as do the owners, under 3A.
It's an equation that the owners would have to go through.
Right.
To determine whether or not they benefit more under one, two, or three.
But we're already taking a lot of rights away from them under this. So what I'm trying to do is, you know, soften the blow a little bit here, because they've already invested in affordable housing, and, you know, hundreds of people have benefited from that investment. I don't want to punish them for having done that. So they are going to take a hit here. As I said, nobody's going to get everything they want. But I think even apart from that, there's upside for residents and owners under 3A, and I don't see a downside to keeping it because there's going to be preservation in any event.
Well, one more comment, and then that'll be the end of it. I don't see that under options one or two that the owners are penalized in any way. I mean, they have the ability to maintain the economic value. They have the... They can go for TDR. They can go for lots of things that will preserve their economic.
There's a radically smaller pool of buyers under either option.
Again, we're... I don't disagree with you there either, but we're charged with coming up with options.
And that means the price is almost certainly going to be lower than they would get in the current zoning.
Perhaps not necessarily highly realistic, but the most realistic we've been able to come up with.
Yeah, I know.
I'm not going to... Our last other matrix we have unfilled in is the matrix point feasibility of selected options.
Yeah.
You know, I would put all of these as low. I mean, I just.
3A? I think 3A is higher than one or two.
Maybe, maybe. It depends on where the owners are.
Right.
They need to have economic...
Well, we've talked about TDRs and how difficult it is to imagine the right property transferring development rights. Where would it go? Where in the city is the zoning desired for that extra density, that kind of thing? That's a real challenge, and we haven't seen it done elsewhere in this context. And with two, it would take a real ground-up effort for the residents to buy it.
We've all had this discussion, and I think.
I know, I'm not trying to rehash it. I'm just saying, I think 3A has more reality in it than one or two.
I'm, again, skeptical.
Okay.
I think maybe in a short-term situation, some owners may look at this and say, "Yeah, I believe the city can deliver to me incentives that would make me want to do this at least for a while." At some point, the economy would either make that not feasible, and we'd be back to the beginning, or it would be the city is unable to deliver insufficient incentives. And because we don't know what the city can actually do or be willing to commit to upfront, I just...
Okay.
Don't feel strongly about 3A as an option.
I understand. Legitimate. Anybody else want to comment before we get a motion on this? I'll raise one if nobody's up for it.
Just a quick clarification. So with option one, I think in our previous conversations, we'd agreed that the fee-in lieu scenario was more likely than the TDR play-out.
That's true.
My observation is that with both parks one and two being relatively highly developed against their density goals, the fees in lieu would only be, I believe, on the delta between taking park one, for example, at eighty percent, eight percent current density. It would be on that 12% remainder. So this isn't a windfall.
That's... Is that how it works, Lori? I thought the fee-in lieu would come from somebody developing density elsewhere, transferring it to the MHP owner.
Well, the fee-in lieu would be that in other places in the city where affordable units are required, they have, they would have the option to pay a fee-in lieu, which would go into a fund. And the fee in the fund would then be given to the property owner, the mobile home park property owner, for the difference between what they have and what they could have had.
Yeah, so it doesn't change the 88% development capacity. It doesn't affect the 12% undeveloped.
It's, you pay for the 12%. The fee pays for the 12%.
Okay. Is that what you meant, Mike? Okay, I misunderstood.
And I'm comfortable with that. I just think that that's the... As the homeowners look at these various options, it's not the windfall fee-in lieu you might have with a different park, which is much lower, lower density developed. These are near max, right? So there's not that much meat on the bone there.
Yeah. Mike?
A question, the density percentages here, existing percentage of allowable density. Is that the current zoning, or would that reflect a higher density that would be allowed under options one or two? You get more... Today, there's zoning on it. There's a limit.
Right, it's based on the existing zoning.
Right.
So you wouldn't achieve any more than you could achieve under the existing zoning.
But are we contemplating under options one and two that there would be a higher density allowed?
No.
Okay.
All right, so I'm going to, unless somebody else wants to add anything else, I'm going to make a motion. I know there's differing opinions on this, good legitimate differences. That we adopt options one through 3A for liquid villa, and that 3A be modified to require long-term preservation for as long as the city provided financial incentives to the owner, and that to the extent the owner did not receive those benefits, well, and that the owner have to share the, some portion of those city benefits with the residents in the form of lower rent. And to the extent they did not, or the city could not deliver on those benefits, that the owner's sale rights would be limited to options one and two. Lori, does that sound like what you had in mind when you were discussing this? Did I miss something?
I think the only thing that would be different would be that the notion of providing them incentives for as long as the city could provide incentives actually could be quite a windfall. If the city was providing incentives every few years to keep the preservation going, and then at the time it stopped, then they got paid for the missing density. That would be potentially a lot of money that they would get.
They'd have to share the windfall with the residents, though.
Right, and that, yeah, that might help with that.
Right. I mean, we can't, you know, we're all working with unknown numbers here. I know that fine-tuning would be required by the council, but with the time we have, I think that's the best we can do. So if, I think, Lori, I think we're... I think I'm getting it right there, right, Lori? Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? No discussion? I know we had a lot of discussions, so no further discussion, I guess. All right. All in favor of the motion, raise your hand and say aye. Aye. All opposed, raise your hand and say nay.
Nay.
Okay, motion carries. With explanation, right, Lori, of criteria and distinction or resolution of the conflict?
Correct.
So, to those who are sitting here tonight, we went through a lot of time and technical analysis on this one, but the good news is, this will largely, I think, apply to Inglewood East. So that should be a lot shorter. You won't have to, you won't repeat ourselves. So I invite any of the commissioners to bring up a proposal for which options to adopt for Inglewood East and the criteria that justify it. Commissioner Vanderlin?
Be consistent with our previous motion. I think the similarities between these two properties would argue for having the same for Inglewood East.
Okay.
Opposed, motion.
Okay.
Same as we had for the earlier property.
So there's a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Do I hear a discussion? No further discussion. All in favor of Commissioner Vanderlin's motion, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. Any abstentions, motion carries. Now for the justifications for options one, two, and three, 3A for Inglewood East. Does anybody want to propose?
I think they're the same.
Okay. Agreement, agreement, agreement. Okay, then a motion to adopt the same justifications. I think it was, what, criteria?
One, two, three, four, five, and seven.
Okay. Second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, discussion, further discussion? There being none, all in favor of those criterias justification, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. Any abstentions, motion carries. The next property is Lake Terrace, 7,000 Northeast 181th Streets. Do I hear a motion with respect to options to adopt... Oh, by the way, with Inglewood East, reconciliation, I think, is already implicit in the motion that passed, right, Lori? Reconciliation of one through 3A.
I believe so.
Okay. We've checked that box. All right. So moving on to Lake Terrace. The previous vote was to adopt only option four for Lake Terrace. No city requirement to preserve the mobile home park. It remains the choice of the property owner. The MHP property would be upzoned with the requirement that redevelopment include affordable housing units comparable in number, size, and cost to those being replaced. MHP residents may have first right to rent the new units. Relocation may be assistance may be provided for those who don't choose to still live there in the new units or during the period of time it takes to renovate the property from mobile home park to apartment units. This brings up something I, that came up before, Lori. What about the legality of tenant right of first refusal? Did the city attorney respond to that?
I think if it were determined that it was, if the units were targeted for a population at a certain income level, that you would have to rent to that income level, and that you could do first, right of first refusal. It was, where the city attorney said no was on the purchase. It was, where the city attorney said no was on the purchase, right of first opportunity to purchase the park.
Did the attorney elaborate on the legal authority for that?
I don't think they did, but it was, I think I included the emails in your last packet and I'll see if I can find them.
Okay.
If you want to.
Well.
Continue your conversation while I look for them.
Yeah, let's, let's go move forward here and we can tinker with that as it comes up. So option four only for Lake Terrace. Any comments on that? Any proposals, any amendments or motion to adopt?
Question?
Yes.
If an owner chose option four and there was a unit that, for which there wasn't the right of first refusal exercised, what would be the rental rate for a non-resident? Maintain the.
Market.
Affordable housing, would it be market or would?
Think.
It's a good question.
What I'm trying to get at, what's the nu, what's, do we have a fixed guarantee of a number of affordable units here? Or we're saying if, we'll go up to affordable units up to the current residents. But if they, if the current residents don't exercise it, then that unit could be rented out at market rate? Or would it be retained as a affordable unit?
My assumption was that it would be retained as an affordable unit.
And now, so my question is, what is the percentage? Is that thirty, fifty, eighty?
Yeah, we haven't determined that.
I think we, we need to determine that if that's, that's what we're saying here. And I, I would throw out fifty percent.
Anybody want to comment on that?
Well, I think if we think about the residents that spoke from this mobile home park, we might want to make it the least, the thirty percent. Just, just because that would give them a seamless entry into it with assistance for relocating in the interim.
Let me make sure I'm clear here. If the existing residents would rent at an affordable rate comparable to what they're paying now, we're talking about if, if now or in the future, that unit was going to be rented to someone else, what would be the affordable rate? And I'm saying it should be something less than, we're making an allowance for the current residents.
Okay.
Protect them. But going forward, that allowance is a severe penalty on the, on the.
Developer.
Property owner and the developer. We're giving them, saying at least over a period of time, they can plan, I've seen some more rental income out of that.
Right.
We want to put an upper limit on that. We don't want it to go to mark, hundred percent of market value, so in between, I'm throwing out fifty percent as a compromise.
Yeah.
Whatever people think is.
But if you.
Thanks for thinking of that, because I completely didn't think of it and it's a really important question to try and actually make something happen that helps residents and helps other people. Actually build the property that provides housing supply, but go ahead.
But it's a very small number of units and I think we should keep it at that lower mean income. That it would just create a guaranteed long-term affordable housing at the lowest level.
I was concerned about that as well and raised that question and that was why we came back with the pictures of units on a size, lot size similar to these that were built very large and had a fairly large number of units on it. So it wouldn't be eleven and twenty units, it would be substantially more units could be built on that, on that footprint.
So it would be a percentage then, not just the number eleven? Okay. Okay.
Here's my thought, is that our goal here is to provide the lowest cost housing for the existing residents, but to actually see this thing get built. And as we know, there are lots of places in the city where we have incentives for builders to get increased density in exchange for providing affordable units and it's not happening. So I would say we, we go to eighty for the non-resident rents so that it radically increases the likelihood that these things actually get built. Because it's great to have good intentions, but if nothing gets built, we haven't done any good.
So it's still the, but, but that's where doing a percentage versus a number could really make a difference.
The number is a percentage, it's eighty.
I'm not talking about the rent, I'm talking about the number of actual units. So it, it does give the developer an incentive, it's preserving the affordable housing at that lowest level, but it's not keeping them in perpetua, you know, as time goes forward. If the residents from that original move leave, they can rent it at the higher rate, is that correct?
Lori?
The assumption has been that once the units were deemed affordable, they would be affordable in perpetuity. What the level of affordability is. Can change. We have, well, we haven't, there's been no real discussion of that. And, and, and the commission can decide if you want to go beyond the, if you want to set a target, that's fine. If you don't want to set a target and you want to say, we just want them to be affordable in perpetuity, that's fine as well. And we'll work through the issue with the city council.
That may be the way to go.
I, I'm concerned that we don't really have a number in front of us.
Yeah.
Says, here's the size of the number of units, given our assumption if you have a hundred percent uptake, what is that? What does that look like? So I think that there's a.
Too many moving parts for us to. Yeah.
That's outside of the scope of our.
Good point though, that you made about the percentage of units versus the percentage of rent or percentage of income. Okay.
Maybe what we could do is we could recommend that the city council set a minimum long-term affordable unit percentage, percentage of units of the total. And a, the recommendation that the city, that a percentage of affordability income percentage such that it balances out.
Are we?
The attractiveness of the project to a developer.
Yeah, are we, is it really likely they're going to build more than the exist, number of units for existing residents?
No.
I don't remember that.
The number of affordable units.
Right. That's what I mean. Thought our goal was to provide housing for the residents primarily here. I didn't know it was going to be, oh, and let's give them more density so they can throw in an extra X number of affordable units. Because that's, that's going to, that's another disincentive. Now you gotta go beyond, you know.
That's not what I was saying, but I don't necessarily agree that it's a disincentive.
Yeah.
When they get more density, if, if it's profitable to build it, they'll build it.
Yeah.
No, what I'm, what I was, the elaboration on what we already set, which was we're going to have, we don't know how, how, what the size is, potential density could be for the footprint that we have. It's some number, it's larger than what's out there right now. Our objective number one is to provide in any new redevelopment, options for, to house the existing residents.
Right.
We don't know what percentage of the developer would propose.
Right.
So we can't set a percentage today for that. We also don't know what percentage of King County median income, the current residence income is, so we can't set that rate either. So we don't know how those things would play out in such a way that you come up with a project that would be attractive for a developer. Those are equations that are going to have to be run by the city council in talking with developers and developing a final solution. Unless they want to kick it back to us.
Well.
And hire maybe a consultant to do that work.
But the, the way the option reads, it's really limited to affordable housing units comparable in number to those being replaced. That's, and beyond that, if the council wants to get creative, we leave it at their discretion. All right, so I think this option we like as is, right?
Yeah, I do have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
Mike, I might need your expertise here on the average size for an affordable unit, because it seems like we're comparing the similar things in a way, right? We're talking about a mobile home, a manufactured home, which is potentially six hundred square feet, to what we might call an affordable unit in a higher density building, which could be much smaller, right? Could be a studio apartment, it could be a one bedroom and a one bedroom might be four hundred square feet. So how do we calibrate what is a home today for a family of four or six to what would be an affordable unit in a new building? Are we assuming they're apples to apples or are they definitionally apples to oranges?
Well, I might need a reminder on what the typical square footage is for a one bedroom or a two bedroom, single wide, double wide manufactured home. But I don't think we'll find that there's that big of a difference between one or two bedroom manufactured homes and one or two bedroom apartments. What I'm seeing mostly in new projects is that studios will range four fifty to five fifty or so. One bedrooms will go.
Square feet.
Yeah, sorry. Five, one bedrooms will go maybe five hundred to seven hundred. Two bedrooms, you know, six fifty to eight hundred, that kind of thing.
Well, six fifty, they can get pretty big actually.
Yeah, well, sure.
I might go about eight hundred, but yeah, I think otherwise, I agree. But yeah, that's a good point, Mike. I'm wondering if we have the time and the information to be able to make that kind of fine tuning. I mean, it's a good question, but I'm not sure we've got the bandwidth right now to do it, that analysis.
Maybe something is as expeditious as saying comparable unit.
Yeah.
And we can work with the city council to fine tune the details.
Yeah, it does say similar.
Number size and cost.
That a three hundred square foot studio does not.
Number, size, and cost, right.
Yeah, no, you make a good point. And I know people from the residents have come forward with that concern too.
Right.
Another one of those things where we can't have it all, we'd love to.
Right.
Have a two bedroom, one thousand square foot apartment waiting for somebody leaving the one thousand square foot double wide.
Right. I, and I think that's what this option says, is that you're going to try to accomplish that.
Right. That's our goal.
Yeah.
Oh, I see, comparable in number, size, and cost. Okay.
Right.
So again, I think the most, or the option is pretty solid, that we have agreement on the language of the option, is that right? So let's get a motion on that. Commissioner Vanderline?
Just a question.
Yeah.
For staff, you'd indicated that for these two, they were inconsistent with the comprehensive plan vision?
The current zoning.
Only because they are in the downtown commercial zone.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Right. I found the email from Isley Best on the first right to rent and it says, after reviewing the King County decision and related cases, based on my initial review, I think it's generally safe to say that the city can encourage action through incentives or make them conditions of covenants that property owners can voluntarily enter into. So through incentives, perhaps your density increase is based on, if you want that, then you need to provide first right of rent.
Oh, I see. They're buying into it, so they.
Right.
Essentially waiving a challenge to being required to rent to the existing residents.
Right.
Okay. Good. All right. Motion on Lake Terrace? Mike?
I'm going to accept the existing recommendation for Lake Terrace of option four.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Do I hear a discussion? Further discussion, I should say? No further discussion? All in favor of Commissioner Vanderline's motion, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. Any abstentions? The motion carries. Justifications for option four, based on our criteria? Any proposals?
Yes, vice chair, please. So one of the first ones was the redevelopment timeline, less than five years. This is kind of an imminent possibility of redevelopment, so I think that lends a little more urgency to, to option four. I also, you know, the, the, the percentage of allowed density twenty-two percent, so you know, based on our discussion there.
Yeah.
It looks like there's at least from an economic perspective, the, the possibility that we can take care of the existing residents under redevelopment and also leave quite a bit of market-based and/or some affordable housing units there. And, and the zoning inconsistency is, is another factor I, I perceive for that, so those were my thoughts on that.
So we've got, what about one, the fact that there aren't that many units in the park?
Yeah, that, that relates also to number twenty-two percent.
Right.
Yeah, that, that it would be potentially easier to accommodate the existing residents should, should it be redeveloped.
So vice chair, you're proposing criteria one, two, three, five?
Five, yes, correct.
I would add seven. I don't know of any environmental constraints that would prohibit redevelopment.
Yeah, that's, that's valid, yep.
Okay. Anybody want to add or challenge that? I want to elaborate on three, because this is a big difference. I'm sure people could look at our analysis and say, oh, they're just looking out at, you know, the slough and protecting those and here are these properties next to city hall and they're proposing redevelopment for more units, even though they're setting some aside for the existing residents, why not preserve our units? And this is, this is where zoning and the city's vision and the city's comprehensive plan really come up and I'm pretty sure the city council is going to be really sensitive to those points. They are trying to build a city here and you see them doing it now over, can more village, restaurants, meeting places, more density over the apartments across the street. They have that in mind for other parts around this area. This is, this is where the city is going to be. This is the city's future. It's going to have businesses and apartments and more density and it's going to be easy to walk, to stores and restaurants. It's going to be easy to get to the bus. This is why this is a better place for it, because it's where the bus goes and you can walk to the bus. And that's why the city has for a long time, for the twenty years it's been a city, has said, this is where our business center is going to be, this is where our density is going to be. So this is the biggest challenge with these parks, the ones that are around city hall, they conflict with that. If you keep them there, you'll never have the city that the founders of the city and the succeeding city councils had in mind. And whether we or the commissions like it or not, I could tell you that the people on the city council have that vision in mind and have worked a long time to achieve it. I think this is going to be a big, important item for them and it's not because we like one group and don't like another group. It's realistically what the city had in mind for decades and what the council, I think, has in mind even now. So just hopefully that explains some of this. All right, so we pass, go ahead, Mike.
I just comment to support what you just said. I think this really meets our balance criteria, because we are protecting the rights of the existing citizens. At the same time, long-term, we're, you're going to have denser development here that's more consistent with the city's long-term development plan. So I think this is an excellent, perfect, an appropriate option for this property.
All right, so I think we have agreement on the criteria, right? One, two, three, five, seven is justifying option four only for this park. Sound right? Do I hear a motion on that? Got a motion from this side of the.
Okay, I'll make a motion that the criteria we use to validate this decision are one, three, five, and seven.
And two.
Oh, excuse me, one, two, three, five, and seven.
Great. Do I hear a second? Thank you. Do I hear further discussions? No further discussion? All in favor of Commissioner Baker's motion, raise your hand and say aye.
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 All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. Any abstentions, the motion carries. All right, we move on to, and I, there's no, vice chair.
I'm sorry.
Please, no, don't.
I just want to ask a clarifying question, Lori, on option number four, the, the upzoning, the redevelopment, requirement of redevelopment include affordable housing. Would the zoning still say, still say, still stay downtown commercial or would there be, would the upzoning, it wouldn't, it wouldn't necessarily lead to, it, it couldn't lead to a commercial development? In other words, there would be no option for residential? Whatever the upzoning is, it would include residential development, whether it's mixed use or strictly residential or, I just want to kind of clarify what.
Right, I think, I think the vision would probably be mixed use.
But that's not been.
But residential would be a component.
Okay. But that's for a later time to actually determine what exactly that would, mixed use or purely residential?
Well, I think it would probably stay downtown commercial and just the density would be increased.
So it would, it would be mixed use then, under that?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Right. All right, we, we satisfied then the voting for Lake Terrace, correct? And there's no conflict, because it's only option four. Let's move on to seventy twenty-one Northeast 181st Street. Let's look at the proposal. It's to, current commission's position is to apply option four only to this mobile home park. Do I hear any proposals to amend that? No? All right, do I hear a motion to adopt it? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Do I hear further discussion? All right. Discussion's closed. All right, discussion's closed, all in favor of the motion, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, raise your hand and say nay. Any abstentions, the motion carries. Option four for 7021 Northeast 181st Street, and the criteria that apply to justify option four only, do I hear a proposal?
I propose we use the same as we did for Lake Terrace.
All right, any objections or challenges? None, do I hear a motion? Okay, let's, why don't you cite those, I think it's a.
Yeah, as justification for the selection of choice four, we use the qualifications of one, two, three, five, and seven.
Thank you. Second on the motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you, further discussion, Commissioner Vanderline?
Just a comment, the one thing that's different with this one versus the previous one is the larger percentage of more current units. In case that should give anybody pause, I would refer them back to our option, which requires that the property be comparable, and so we have an automatic adjuster in here for that level, so I, that's why I feel comfortable continuing to cite that.
All right.
Criteria.
Did we vote on the criteria?
Nope, we were in the discussion phase.
Right, that's it, thanks. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of Commissioner Mulcair's motion, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, raise your hand and say nay. Any abstentions, motion carries. Option four only applies to 7021 Northeast 181st Street. Moving on to Kenmore Village.
Chair Nugent, could I?
Yes, please.
I just want to make this explicit, but I should have said this at the beginning, and I know the answer, but there were several options that you all had considered in the past.
Right.
And my assumption is that you do not wish to revisit any of those assumptions, but I think it would probably be worthwhile to make that explicit.
Yeah, and thanks for doing that.
Yeah.
Does anybody want to revisit any of the proposals that we had just considered before? They are in attachment four.
Yeah.
Okay, we need a motion?
I don't think so.
Okay, so that's on the record. Moving on to 7614 Northeast Faultway, also known as Kenmore Village, the current commission position is to apply only option four. Do I hear a proposal to change that? Adopt that?
I believe we adopt the, the option four is proposed.
Do I hear a second?
I second.
Do I hear any further discussion? All in favor of Commissioner Vanderline's motion, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, raise your hand and say nay. Any abstentions, the motion carries. Option four only for Kenmore Village. As for the criteria that apply to that decision, do I hear a proposal? Identify criteria. All right, go ahead, Commissioner Vanderline.
I, I move that we adopt the same criteria for this property as we did for the previous one.
For 7021 Northeast 181st, which would be, I know it's redundant, what, one, two, three, five, and seven? Any objections? Commissioner Baker?
Just a clarification, can you tell me why seven would be included as part of our criteria?
Oh, good, yeah. We have environmental constraints. I didn't catch that, thank you. Do you want to elaborate?
Just, just clarifying.
Yeah.
You know, I don't think that should be included as part of our.
Motion to eliminate.
Eliminate seven, so it'd be one, two, three, and five, right? So let me, let me do this, I mean, Commissioner Baker makes a good point, do you want to modify option four because of this, or anything? Or you just want to leave that out?
I don't.
Yeah.
I just want to clarify to the council that we did not include that as part of the criteria.
In spite of number seven.
In spite of number seven.
Okay, that is on the record, and that's a good point. So Commissioner Vanderline's made a motion for one, two, three, and five as justifications for option four only for Kenmore Village, do I hear a second?
Good, I'll second.
Thank you, further discussion? Okay, there being none, all in favor of Commissioner Vanderline's motion for Kenmore Village, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, raise your hand and say nay. Any abstentions, the motion carries. Option four only for Kenmore Village. And then we come to the last mobile home park on our list, Lakewood. And for Lakewood, we have two options that the commission has taken a position on, and that's option 3A and option four. Do I hear a motion to change that or adopt that? I'm not going to move on that, I've got, so, we need somebody to move on that. It makes feelings about option 3A, I think. But, anybody else? Mr. Vanderline?
Not making a motion, but I've just, would say that I have the same, I also have concerns about including 3A as an option here.
And we should discuss it, right? Is this one suited for preservation? It's a big one. Moderately consistent, so that favors preservation, it's underdeveloped, that favors redevelopment. So, do we have any other commissioners inclined to omit option 3A for Lakewood? Going once, I guess not. All right, so those in favor of the current proposal for Lakewood, can I invite somebody to make a motion?
I move that we continue the current recommendation for Lakewood with option 3A and four.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Okay, all in favor of the Vice Chair's motion, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, raise your hand and say nay.
Nay.
Nay, any abstentions, there being none, the motion carries. Options 3A and four apply to Lakewood. Now, Lori, do we have a conflict here?
I don't perceive a conflict with this one necessarily. The property owner could choose to preserve the mobile home park if incentives were given.
Mm-hmm.
If the owner chose to redevelop the park, then again, the higher density with all of the other restrictions would apply.
What about a preference? You suggested that we give the council guidance on a preference?
If you choose to do so, right, I, I don't, I don't think it's as important when they are compatible.
When they are compatible. Anybody want to propose a preference? No? Okay, justification? Proposal for criteria supporting the decision on the options? I didn't vote for the motion, so I'm not the guy to propose the criteria.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll start. First, the, the size, I think, was a factor in having a, the preservation option, I think that's, I think that's important. The fact it's already moderately consistent, I think, was a factor for, for me. The longer redevelopment timeline, five to 10 years, indicated there, there might be a possibility for the property owner to want to, want to preserve it for some, and so I think the, the kind of middle ground there of 3A was, was applicable.
Okay.
So those are my, so one, three, and, what is that? Five were, were my personal.
Justifications for 3A only, because I like what you did there, because they're rather different options, and they would probably require different justifications.
You're, you're right, those were, those are my options for including 3A, that's correct, yes.
Okay, anybody want to comment on that? No? Do I hear a motion on those justifications for 3A?
No move.
Thanks, a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor of those justifications, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, raise your hand and say nay.
Nay.
Nay, and any abstentions, there being none, the motion carries. Justifications for option four for Lakewood. Anybody? Commissioner Vanderline?
I'll just venture, I think this is consistent with what we decided for 7021 Northeast 181st, criteria one, two, three, five, and seven.
I would say we leave one out, because it's already got more capacity than all the others, but two, three, and seven. What do you think of that?
Fine.
You okay with two, three, and seven?
I would amend it.
Justifying for four? Did you make a motion? Or was that just a proposal?
That was.
An idea, talking point.
I will make a motion that we adopt as a criteria two, three, five, and seven.
Well, I think five was part of the justification for 3A, or for, yeah, 3A.
It was.
Not four, that there's a longer timeline envisioned for selling or redeveloping.
I'm not.
Yeah.
Five to 10 years is vague enough.
I know.
It's less than the, if you want to, i- if the consensus of folks is to agree to remove five, I'm fine with that.
So we've got two, three, seven.
Seven.
Justification for option four.
Yes.
On Lakewood, do I hear, is that a motion?
I.
Yeah, question, go ahead.
Question. Why, why are you saying that qualification three is in line with option four?
Oh, yeah, because it's consistent with the city's vision to have it redeveloped, or at least moderately consistent. Multi-family.
I think the consistency is with current usage.
Oh, right. So we have 19 dwelling units per acre for. Good point, for Lakewood. Go ahead, Mike. Vanderline?
Okay.
Twitchy. What kind of density are we thinking about for that? It would be enough density to satisfy housing as affordable for all the existing residents, right?
It, it meets sort of the minimum density, this is, this is not zoned downtown commercial, it's zoned downtown residential.
Okay.
And I think for townhome development, the minimum density was 18, so there was, it, it could meet the density requirements.
And be redeveloped.
You know, the, the upper level of density is higher, but it would meet the minimum in its current condition.
Okay, so you could take it or leave it, it argues for either one, right? Yeah, and it's, so it's a legit reason for saying, let's redevelop. So we still have the motion, which is two, three, and seven, as justifications. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Do I hear further discussion? All in favor of Commissioner Vanderline's motion for Lakewood, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, raise your hand and say nay. Any abstentions?
Nay.
Nay, from Commissioner Mulcair, any abstentions? Motion carries, six to one. For Lakewood, options 3A and option four, and the justification. All right, Lori, does that satisfy?
It, it does, I think the one other thing I need to do is poll you all to see if we have a quorum for July 9, and if we do, then that will be the day that we'll schedule the joint meeting, and at your next meeting, which is on, I think, the 19th, June 19th, you can talk about how you want to do the presentation. The packet to the city council will be, I think, due before that meeting, so, anyway, given the timelines. And just to clarify, July 9 is a Monday and not Tuesday. It is a Monday, correct. So I think I heard from Carol and Mark and Mike Mulcair that you three were available.
I don't know if I will.
Okay, all right, is there, are, I need one more commissioner to have a quorum for that night.
I'm not available.
Not available, okay?
Monday, July 9.
Aye.
Yeah, I'm available.
Okay, so Scott.
Vice Chair, you're not available?
No, I am, yeah.
Oh, good. So we, do we have four or five available?
Carol.
Two, three.
You, Scott.
We have four, and then Dennis is not available, Doug, you're uncertain.
I'm a maybe, I'm afraid.
Right, and Mike is uncertain.
Well, yes, I'd say tentatively.
Okay, so two tentatives.
Okay.
One, no, and four committed. So is, is the commission comfortable then moving ahead with the joint meeting?
Yeah, we got four.
Okay.
So I think we should stick with it. And what time is that?
It's actually going to start early, at 6 o'clock, and we will have an interpreter there for comments, initial comments at the meeting, is my understanding, so we'll confirm that, but.
All right, anything else, Lori?
I don't think so. So at your next meeting, again, we'll revisit this and how you want to do the presentation, so those of you who will be in attendance might want to think about that, and then also we'll be beginning the critical area project, it'll be the introduction, boy, a total change of topic, so we'll be beginning that.
So, I'm sorry, the next meeting, we'll also be talking about the shoreline?
Ah, shoreline and critical areas, we'll just do an introduction.
Okay.
To the project.
We're going to have a consultant.
I, I might add just one more thing, just so you have it in the back of your mind, so the intention here is that when your recommendation goes forward, the city council will set the final direction, and then staff will be in the position of working on direct financial incentives or working on code amendments, whatever it is that we're working on, there's a slim chance that there would be comprehensive plan amendments associated with it. I don't know that, but I am just letting you be aware that if there is something like that, we would be back to you for a meeting later in the year to have those amendments considered and adopted by the end of the year. Okay?
All right, thank you.
Uh-huh.
All right, so, you've got the minutes, you've got the minutes for April 17?
I thought you were, there was a.
There were going to be revision, we'd take it up at the next meeting.
Right, we'll, we'll put those back on your agenda at the next meeting for your approval.
Okay, all right, I think that satisfies the agenda for tonight's meeting, do we have any announcements, new business? There being none, I hereby adjourn tonight's meeting. Thank you, everybody.